All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. If you could find your seats, we're going to resume the meeting. For the folks here and the folks at home, it's a rather complex audiovisual exercise, which is why we're a little delayed. The folks at home on Zoom will have a 30-second delay with what they're seeing. We think that's manageable. This is how we're going to handle that. We're going to do the presentation. That'll be about 10 minutes. And then we're going to alternate between questions in the room and then questions from Zoom. And when we go to the questions from Zoom, we're all going to sit quietly for 30 seconds and wait for them to hear that it's their turn to ask us questions, and then we'll go that way. We could probably figure this out, but I fear it would take another 30 minutes. So we'll operate that way. We're all going to be happy and patient and pay attention to budget more than the audiovisual exercise. So appreciate your patience and for those online for waiting this long so far. So we're going to get started. We're going to present the FY '25 budget. This is the second budget for the new city of Essex Junction. We're about six months into the first budget. This is not a final budget. This is very much a draft. We're doing this early because we want an opportunity to hear thoughts, comments, priorities from you all to see how to keep proceeding on this. The council will take this feedback on the 14th, incorporate what we can. There'll be another opportunity for feedback on the 14th at a city council meeting and again on the 28th of February, when we will have to warn the final budget, which will appear on the ballot. So after today, there are still two more official times to come to a meeting and provide input. I just wanted to make that clear. This isn't the last time. Through that. This budget as proposed today is a $12.1 million budget. It's a 6% increase over the FY '24 budget. The impact of that on a home assessed at $280,000 is $170. This does not include the penny on the tax rate economic development item that we have expiring this year. That will likely be on the ballot in some form. We vote on that every few years separately. The impact of that penny on a $280,000 home is $28. I'm like one behind here, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong screen. This budget results in a 6.6% increase. New tax rate will be .9805 as presented today. That impact, as I mentioned, is $170 on a $280,000 assessed home. Property taxes make up 91% of this budget for revenue. The remaining revenue comes from fees collected from community development and other sources. This slide indicates that 6% of that overall property tax and revenue comes from the Global Foundries project or property, and city businesses contribute 11%. This is a breakdown for all of our 18 departments and budget lines. The biggest item here is Health and Human Services, which includes Essex Rescue and our contract with Essex Police for public safety. Streets is next at 13%. That's Public Works, Streets, snow plowing, salting, maintenance, followed by Recreation So the general fund is broken into 18 different items, 18 different expenditures. And what we're going to present today is sort of a highlight of where the big movers are in the budget and the reasons behind any increases or decreases that we're seeing so far. One of the largest single contributors to this is a 15.5% increase in health insurance. This is something we're seeing more and more of. We're seeing it in the private sector. We're seeing it in nonprofits, and we're certainly seeing it in municipalities. Combined with that, the normal salary increases are bringing us up for a total of nearly $370,000. We're adding a finance, we're proposing adding a finance billing coordinator. This position was previously part-time. I will add, though, that half of this position will be made up, will be paid for by what we call enterprise funds, and these are water sanitation when you get your water bill and that sort of thing. There's a $10,205 increase in the administration budget so that we can work on improving our outreach and connection with the community through events and efforts like mailings and other things. And we kept in a $10,000 ask for implementing the strategic planning results that we're hoping to learn more about later this year and for an event like this to bring the community together next spring, late winter. In the Clerk's office, we're seeing reduced revenues from recording fees, about $31,000 is what we're expecting for next year for those revenues to go down. We're seeing a reduction in our technology subscription expenses of about $10,800. We have fewer elections coming over the next year, so we're seeing a reduction there. And the City Clerk's office, the City Clerk will go down to 32 hours in this proposed budget, although the Clerk's office will still be staffed full-time. In finance, we're seeing an increase in insurance of about 10.7% over this current fiscal year. And the IT contract that we're in our first year of right now, we're expecting that to go up nearly $75,000. I will point out, the election expenses and any ballots that are mailed, those expenses are shared with the school district and not borne solely by the city. In community development, a majority of the increase we're seeing there is for a full-time code enforcement officer as part of our rental registry program. I will say that the way that is thought out right now and proposed, it will be revenue-neutral or cost-neutral, as we'll expect revenues to pay for that entire program. We are putting our economic development work on hold for the fiscal year, saving about $36,000 there, as we work on what we have learned from the strategic planning process and decide how to proceed on that work based on that input. Stormwater, we're planning on hiring a consultant to help us navigate a possible stormwater utility, and that would shift our stormwater permit and work expenses in that department to something you might see on a water bill as opposed to, or a separate billing as opposed to be included in the general fund budget. Other costs there that are going up are increases to receive, increases in matching grant requirements for Better Roads Grant and some of our stormwater permitting. We contract with the Town of Essex for assessing, and they have increased their budget this year around GIS work, I believe. So we've been told that that budget is going up by a little over $11,000. We have a reduction in our buildings budget of about $40,000, largely resulting from the Park Street School building, having those cleaning costs move into the Recreation Program Fund. This is, I think I tried to explain this properly. That building is primarily used for preschool, so we moved the cleaning costs for that building into the Program Fund, which is where the revenues from the preschool appear. So we're having that activity cover the cleaning costs as opposed to those expenses appearing in the general fund. We are continuing our planned increase in how much we set aside for capital expenses, and I'll show you a list of upcoming capital projects or the capital plan in just a moment, $53,000. And we are proposing adding paid training now for the fire department volunteers. In the past, that training time was not paid, and we're trying to rectify that. This is the first 10 items on our five-year capital plan in no particular order. Each year, we set aside money for this purpose, and as you saw in a previous slide, we're trying to increase that slowly every year to account for a fairly lengthy list. As I said, this is in no particular order, and these are ranked by the Capital Committee. There is a five-year plan that exists. It's not set in stone based on how funding might come in from various state or federal sources and/or the condition potentially changing of what we're trying to fix. As you all know, we implemented a lot policy, a local option tax, that appears to be on track for something on the order of $800,000 to $1 million per year. The City Council, the Capital Committee has proposed to the City Council, and the City Council accepted a plan that puts 25% of that money towards sidewalk maintenance and repair, the remainder being allocated for capital projects to keep us on track with funding those projects. That is it for now. Those are the highlights, and what we presented to you were items in the budget that we see that are actually large movers in that budget. The rest of this budget is fairly static as compared to this current year. And we will be happy to take any questions you all might have right now. We're going to have folks, we'll move these mics out into the audience and have folks come up one at a time. And as I said, we're going to do a few minutes in the room, and we're going to alternate back and forth with folks online. I think there's some information on all of your tables. We will do our best to answer your questions today. If we can't, we'll try to get back to you and certainly have answers on the 14th if there's something we can't respond to today. Steve Eustace is going to moderate today, taking us back a bit to as if this were actual annual meeting. So please address your comments and questions to Steve, and we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Raj. So we'll do this like normal. If people come up to the mic, introduce themselves, and then ask and address the budget. Again, either the presentation questions, specifics in the budget, or even just something that's important to you that you want to make sure the council is considering as they work through the various work sessions that Raj already outlined. So who would like to be the first to come up? Thank you, Nick.
Nick Meyer from Essex Junction. Certainly, one of the drivers of the increase of the budget is trying to build a city as we develop the personnel to run the various departments. What are you seeing, except for the potential position of the code inspector, of future needs for the city in personnel? As, are we pretty much where we want to be in terms of staff within management?
Yeah, so yesterday, when we were preparing for this, Steve had a great question about service delivery and where are we at with this budget? So last year, folks remember, we did actually add a few positions in that, in the FY '24 budget, and at this point, we are feeling pretty confident that in terms of staff-wise, we are doing pretty well. So this budget really is still trying to get to the place where we are, as a city, doing all the municipal services that we have to do that used to be shared with the At this point, I think we will probably continue to see some evolution over time, but it is feeling like at this point, we are well-staffed with this budget, and like we pointed out, there is not significant change in staff in FY '25 versus where we are today, if that helps answer that question.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Who else would like to speak? Hey, come on up.
Yeah, hi, John Turbork here, resident of the city. I was just going to follow on that exact question and just change it to the outlook on the capital expenses in terms of the next five years' relationship to the same question.
It's a question on capital expenses over the next five years as relating to becoming a city instead of staff capital.
So the city has done a really excellent job with capital planning for quite a long time. So we have a good list of capital, a good, healthy list of capital projects ahead of us, I would say. And we look five years out, but the plan itself goes much, much further into the future. And I think what we are presenting in this FY '25 budget is a continued transfer from the general fund, so from the taxpayers, directly into supporting that capital plan. We also are now using the local option tax that the city started a couple of years ago to help support that as well. I think, like many places, we are continuing to face aging infrastructure, and so we will continue to have those needs and prepare for that as best we can.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sue.
I don't really like having my back to everybody, but I'll do it. I'm Sue McCormick. I live in the Village, and first, I just want to thank the staff and the City Council. I know this is really hard work, and I just appreciate all of you, and I know you're doing what you think is the best for our future, so thank you for that. I am a person who normally is just like, yes, we need to invest in our future. I do have some real concerns, though, just around the fact that we've just been through this recent really hard separation, and that one of the expectations people had was that now that we're not paying taxes to both the town and the city, that that would have an implication that our tax rate would stay the same or possibly go down. And I just have real concerns about a budget that increases by such a significant amount, the tax rate. I worry that that's going to erode trust in our local officials and set the stage for some just like really negative consequences over time. And so I just wanted to hear you all talk about what you think the implications are. I'm sure you've discussed this of kind of presenting a budget that doesn't have that kind of increase. What would that mean? And you're thinking about presenting a budget with this increase kind of right at this moment in time.
Thank you, Sue.
Well, thank you, Sue. There are a number of ways to take this forward. I think, you know, speaking for myself, I don't think we expected to see the need for some of these increases. I think we've been through a period of a couple of years of unexpectedly, unexpected high inflation. I think we're seeing things like ordering supplies, thinking of the Public Works Department being able to get new equipment ordered and not having that be a possibility. They can't order the replacement equipment they need, or they can't get something fixed. So the repair, for instance, a lot of the driver in Public Works is repairing older equipment that's getting more and more expensive to keep because we can't replace it. Everybody knows about the supply chain issues we're having. Some of these increases we're seeing are, were just not anticipated when we thought about what budgeting for a new city would look like, what separating from the town would look like. There were also some unknowns in that process. I think moving forward, the city, and I think we should always be doing this, frankly, the city really needs to work on this concept of what is the right service level for every department? What are the community expectations? What can we deliver for what level of taxation? And that is a conversation that I think is just simply ongoing. It's sort of started in some places in some ways over the past few weeks. I anticipate our board continuing to talk about it as we think about all the different So I feel like when we talked about putting this together, what we just presented, like I said, those were the movers, and the rest of it sort of stayed static. We've had two years of very high health insurance increases. Most of the cost or much of the cost in these budgets is people. And I think the conversation over the next one to five years will be very much around service level. And that doesn't mean cuts. That means trying to think differently about doing what we're already doing and the implications of that on the budget. I don't know if that really answers your question, Sue, but you know, none of us anticipated a six, well, what was originally a 7.5% increase going into this. And part of the, I will say too, that this FY '24 budget, you know, we all expected a 6% or 7% decrease. Inflation impacted that a lot. We also had, between the time that we decided to separate and started creating a mock budget and the time that we actually had to, we actually did that, and then we put together our first budget, we had a lot of feedback around what the community wanted us to take care of, and that kind of went towards really trying to beef up our community development department. And I think of that, some of that has played out in our strategic planning process. Some of what we've heard from folks is that we want more say as a community in the development that's happening in the community. They don't like not having input. We don't like this stuff being done without us being able to be at the table. And so a focus, I think, for the board was, okay, we understand, we said we're going to have a decrease in this budget, but we were already hearing that feedback prior to the strategic planning process. So we decided to just grin and bear it and try to add some capacity to that department so that we could begin that process sooner. We only have, in my estimation, a small number of lots left and a small number, what's going to, on paper, is a small amount of development coming, but it will have a very large impact on how the community feels and what the quality of life is going to be. And that was a real focus, I think, for us to really staff that department, and that's where a lot of the, that's where a lot of the decrease went last year. As Regina alluded to, I don't necessarily see that continuing. I think we're fairly well-staffed right now. I think we just need to go methodically through all of our departments and have these community conversations around what are our expectations for service, what's important. And I'll say, sort of alluding to what's been going on for the past few weeks, I don't know that that can all happen to every department at once. We don't have the staff capacity to do these analyses on every department at the same time. Each department has its own pressures and complexities, especially right now with rising supply costs and supply chain issues. So we will be, I think, going through as a board over the next year or two very carefully and having these conversations with the community around the priorities we learned from the strategic planning process and how to implement them and what they mean for the budget. So I'm sorry that was really long-winded, but does Andrew and Amber anything to add to that? Regina?
No.
Anything? Is that kind of what you were looking for, Sue?
Thanks, Raj. I just also, I just wondered if there was a conversation about because people had an expectation that's different than what's happening, because we're a new city and there's like this really important trust thing between the people who live here and the people who are leading. I just wondered if there was conversation about the implications of putting together a budget that didn't have the increase and like what would be different with that budget? What are some of the, you mentioned Raj, community development might look different, but if that was a conversation, what were some of the other things that would be kind of different than what we're hearing?
You want to just say something? Sure.
So one thing I think that is important to understand is that the biggest cost is the value of the people and the staff that we have. And so the budget itself would increase if we're talking about an increase in the cost of benefit and wages and salaries. And so that is a difficult, a flat to no increase in the budget is very difficult when that's the majority of our expenses. Outside of that, we've, as Raj mentioned, and we sort of pointed out in those bullets, we certainly could look at other things, but it is, it's tricky when the cost of software goes up and everything that, maintenance of trucks that we need to plow the roads go up, and we've got to adjust to that. And so I think if we were really, truly looking at a situation where we kept the budget flat or a very low increase, we would be very likely looking at service reductions because we couldn't do what we're doing today at a flat to decreased budget, if that makes sense.
You know, part of, part of what I mentioned, that odd statistic of shifting some of the Park Street School expenses to the Recreation Program Fund, I mean, that's sort of where we are right now, trying to, trying to find opportunities. That shift actually impacts the folks that use that program because that will ultimately, if we keep doing that, impact the rates that they're charged for that program. Not every opportunity in every budget has a revenue source like that, operates like that side of recreation where they do that, where they have that income expense opportunity. So yeah, flat budget or a lower budget would end up with varying levels of service reductions. And that is something, I think, inherent in all of our conversations. You know, we know, I think we all know that that's just what would happen, and so it's sort of in the room all the time. As to whether we talked about specific departments, I think we talk about specific departments all the time, just, you know, trying to brainstorm how to proceed with department heads, with their input. But that, you know, I will acknowledge, though, that the trust factor that you brought up is very important to us, and it's, I think it's the first thing we think of, speaking for myself, anyway. It's critical to this, so we're aware and concerned. I think we should take an opportunity to see if anybody on Zoom has any questions, which means we'll be here for 30 seconds.
We don't have any write-ins. We have had-
We have had some questions. There was a slide problem with the deck shared out to folks on Zoom, so I've corrected that note, so they've got that. Curious how many people were in the room, so I let them know we have about 50 to 60 people here. And then somebody asked if we are actually talking about the rental registry program today. I indicated that we are not specifically, but if there is a question related to it from a budget perspective, happy to take that. Otherwise, we don't have anything from Zoom folks.
Okay. Is this one of our 30-second pauses? Or?
No, we couldn't.
Karen's coming up.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Karen.
Hi, Karen Dolan from Jackson Street. And now that my family has left, I can ask this question because they were like, please don't go up there and ask a question. But, so I'm going to now, so hopefully they didn't tune in online or anything to see. But they actually asked me a question while I was here and I tried to get them to come up and ask, and they didn't want to do that either. So the question is, what is the city's plan for supporting the teen center in Essex Chips? I think there, there was concern about space of where they're going to be, but also just kind of what, what are the city's thoughts on support in general? I know that's an important thing for my kids and for their friends. And I was like, I think there's support, but I would love the concrete answer to be able to relay it back to them.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to?
Sure, I can take that. So as folks may know, we've been talking quite a bit about the renovation of Two Lincoln Building for city offices. Hot off the presses, Harlan provided this information on, on Wednesday night that we're just starting to have a bit of a better sense of what that schedule looks like. So at the moment, if things go on track, which things sometimes go off track, but if they stay on track, we're looking at an August construction start. The construction will probably be in the nine-month-ish timeframe. During that time, what the current plan we're thinking is that the city offices operate in a very small way out of the current senior center space. And the space, the space above the senior center that Chips is in right now would be used for storage for the building. It's going to be a pretty safe, unsafe place for folks to get in and out of in a, in a regular kind of way. And ultimately, what happens after the construction is very much that Chips will have their space upstairs. It will definitely be less space than they've got right now because we've got to reconfigure and, and make space for the city staff. And this space that the seniors are in right now will continue to be used for the senior space once the renovation is over as well. I, I can speak for myself, not the council, but I, for myself, I think we very much care and value the teen center and Chips as an extremely valuable resource in the community. And we'll certainly continue to do what we can to house them. It just is unfortunate that we can't accommodate them during the renovation.
I mean, I'll just echo that we're anxious to have them back in the space, but as Regina pointed out, it's just not safe for them to be there right now, we're told during the construction. I don't believe we have any other space to offer the program on a regular weekly basis during the construction either, which is unfortunate. I'll offer a prompt. We talked about service level a minute ago. We're also interested in hearing ideas around this concept of the budget's going up again this year. You know, when, when we're here next year or even for this budget, what are people thinking? You know, hearing what you've heard already and the pressures on the budget and the, and the reasons for the increases, do you have any ideas on where you'd like us to look? What services are working well for you? You know, one thing I ask when somebody says, I don't want to, I want to cut this program or I want to cut this specific thing, you know, that's great, everybody has their opinion. And I'd also like to know what you would like someone else to then do. When they say, I don't want you to cut this, I want to keep this, but I want you to cut something else, I ask them, what would you do with, what would you ask your neighbor to do without? If we're going to have the exercise with it's going to be a level or we're going to try to reduce the tax rate, something will need to be reduced. So we're, we're always interested in hearing that feedback from folks, you know, what, what nuance could we address to make an impact year over year on the budget? And you don't have to know now. We can take that via email, come to a meeting, but we, what we really have sometimes is just a dearth of input. And we're, and we're trying to make these decisions based on what we hear sometimes at Tannifer or the coffee shop or on a walk. So today, or, you know, to the, to that email, very curious about what people appreciate about the community, what services they really use, and if they want a cut or if they want something to be increased, what's the, what's the, what are they willing to, to ask the rest of the community to do without? You don't have to have that second part, obviously, but it's just nice to know. It's a good exercise, I think, to, to think about when we're trying to balance.
All right, thanks, thanks for that prompt. You want to go up next? Go ahead.
I, Christina Gilde, 20, Prospect Street. I just wanted to go back to the teen center since I'm, has there been any talk about maybe working with either the library or the, or the schools to kind of, since it would be for a temporary time period? I know that's not necessarily your job, but I'm just thinking of, that's a, as having a kid who, who used that center, I just think that's a pretty vulnerable group of people that we want to make sure they're occupied and have activity. So I'm just thinking if there's any other thoughts on making sure we just don't say, no, it's offline for that amount of time and maybe there's a temporary space for them. That's my thought.
All right, thank you for your concern.
I am not aware of what Essex Chips as an organization has done, who they've spoken to, what their communications have been with EWSD. If, I think we've thought about it, I've thought about it, I'm not sure where they could land, unfortunately. I would assume that if we did anything like that, it would be a conversation here as part of the budget presentation. And it's a little bit tricky, I'll be honest, they're a separate nonprofit that we're thankful they use the space at Two Lincoln. But I'm not aware of what arrangements they have or haven't been trying to make, unfortunately. So it's, it's a little tricky. I'm not aware if they've talked to the library, I don't know if, some of these things seem like they would work, I just, I'm just not aware.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Go ahead.
George Dunbar, June Bridge Road. I have several questions, but I'll try to be, two yeses and nos. One, you have the list of all the capital projects that were up there for next year. Is that the $1.2 million that's showing up in the capital plan or is it more than that?
A good way to.
I think when you look at the capital plan budget, it says we're going to spend $1.2 million.
So the list that was up is over five years.
Oh, this is over five years?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that answers that question. My other yes or no question was, you were alluding to the lot policy. The, the lot thing has just fascinated me. You said you have a policy now? You've, you've adopted a policy? Okay.
Correct.
So concerning the lot, some of the things that's fascinated me is when I look at communities of our size and our complexity, most of them run it through the budget process. We seem to be doing it off-budget. I'm just wondering, one, why we chose to do it that way? And my other question is, is can you explain to me what the benefits are of forming a stormwater utility? To me, those two terms don't go together in my head, so I'm trying to understand what those benefits are. And I guess to answer, I'll, I'll give you a response to your question because I think I have one, it won't be popular. Right now, we're going into this year with roughly $1.6 million in the capital plan, I think, somewhere in that range. We're going to add another million to it from the lot. I would suggest we pull out the $568,000 from the general fund transfer. And we will, we will still end this year, or next year, at $1.1 million going into FY26. So that's just something to think about.
Did you get all those questions?
I'm going to ask, Regina or Jess, to speak to the stormwater utility in just a second. Your second question was about why we're doing the lot as a transfer to capital and not folding it into the general fund budget? Or one of your questions was that?
Yeah, so when I look at Colchester, Winuski, South Burlington, they all show it as revenue and then they manage it from there. Our money just seems to appear in this magic account and then we do with it what we want. And it just seems like doing it the way the other communities are doing it, there's a lot more transparency. Now granted, you have to pull out this report, you're going to present, you know, this fund that's out there, what you're going to spend it on. But the only town that I saw that's doing it the way that we're thinking or how we're going to proceed is Brandon, a, a community that's a third of size, both in budget and population of what we are, so I was just interested in why we chose that method.
Okay.
I think it's an accounting question that I don't know if Jess wants to answer, or is that more?
Well, I can, I can, I can say, you know, we'll, we'll have a couple people probably speak to this. I think from its inception, many, many years ago, as a, as a thought, it was something we wanted to add to address future capital needs and we wanted to be very disciplined about not relying on it in other places. So if the mood was, we want to add, I'm not going to come up with an example at all, that's not safe. But if, if the mood struck us and we wanted to add something, oh, look, we've got the lot. When in reality, well, to your, a little bit to your question, Sue, you know, there was a lot of debate around that capital transfer and this proposed budget tax increase. Like, could we not do a big, as big a transfer or the transfer at all? And that would reduce the tax rate. That's a five-year list, the list goes on for capital projects. It did, the list has been long for years and it just, things just keep getting added to it. So there's a big concern, I think, on the board that we make sure that if we're asking for this extra taxation, that we keep the discipline to where we really think it's going to make the biggest difference in the long term, reduce our borrowing needs in the long term and, and that sort of thing. As far as the, as how it's done, I'll, I guess I'll, I'll put Jess in the spot, our finance director. I mean, I will say, as you, as you alluded, right, there, there is a, there is a separate account for it, which is reported out, but I think the thought process anyway goes to that, keeping that discipline of, you know, really taking that money and putting it towards these future capital needs to keep that account as close to funded as we could.
So the capital committee actually went through a pretty extensive exercise of polling several communities throughout the state to see what their policies were. There, it was a mix. There were towns that didn't have policies in place, there are towns that flowed this through their general fund operating budget, and there are towns like Brandon who dedicate it strictly to capital. So the capital committee reviewed all of that documentation, spoke with other finance directors and managers in towns. And the capital committee felt that it was most prudent to put this money not through the general fund into the operating stream because it's not guaranteed revenue. So if there was a shortfall in local option tax revenue in one year, that would have a huge impact on the operating budget itself. So the thought was to put this to capital because there's a significant need there. Just to give you an idea, the like 20-year outlook, or sorry, there's a $20 million need in capital that's identified today over the next, like 15 years. So we knew we needed to find something that could, we could direct a fairly large amount of money to that would affect the operating budget in that we wouldn't have to raise taxes to fund all of this capital work that needs to be done. So the, the local option tax policy that the capital committee ended up proposing to the council and was approved is to direct all local option tax revenue to the capital process with 25% of that revenue each year going into specifically sidewalk maintenance and repairs because that was identified as a significant need and want in the community. So that money will sit in a separate fund on the books and be used for what it is directed for. And I will say too, that the policy is written in a way that the council can redirect local option tax revenue if they so choose, outside of what's identified in the policy right now.
Yeah, I will just add that our policy was based on Brandon, as you identified, so that does make sense, but it was revised and passed by the capital committee based on the city.
Can I add something to a previous question?
Please.
So Raj, Raj had mentioned earlier that the department heads are around. They are in various ways, including library director here on the phone, answering a question earlier. So to the point of Chips and if the library is reaching out to Chips, they have officially and are, are working through to try to see if they can help, help them. They work with Christina quite a bit, and so yes, that, that is happening. Also would just like to say on Zoom, Lexi, I do see that your hand is up, but we don't think we can hear the folks on Zoom. So if you could put your question into the chat, that would be great.
Did we get all of George's questions?
Stormwater.
Stormwater utility? Stormwater utility?
So we need to answer the, the complexities of what, why a stormwater utility? What does that look like?
Yep, so, good question. So the stormwater is, the city is responsible for managing our stormwater from a very big perspective for lots of reasons. One of the main ones pushing the permit requirements on the city right now is the amount of phosphorus that's in Lake Champlain. And as a city, we are responsible for doing everything we can to remove the phosphorus from that stormwater before it makes its way to the Winuski and out to the lake. So the, that is a, a cost that is borne by the city, but it is a result of all of the properties in the city. And so it's, it's a different way to think about a utility because right now you pay for your water because it's coming to you and you're getting it, we're delivering it to you as a, as a service. But you can think about stormwater in sort of a similar way as wastewater. We are collecting it, we are managing it, we're doing it in different ways that isn't as much infrastructure-based, but the idea still is the same. That, the cost of that environmental permitting are quite significant. And Chelsea Mandago, who is the water quality superintendent, has been doing that work for quite some time. She did that work before she assumed leadership of the, of the wastewater treatment facility. And so we've got a lot more to do in that realm, including trying to figure out how to, how to get that work done. I don't know if that's a great answer to that question, but that's what I've got for right now.
I mean, I think, go ahead.
If I can try to channel my inner Chelsea, which I don't do very well, one of the things that she has talked about before is when we think about stormwater, if that we continue to pay for stormwater through the general fund, that means your property value is a main driver, which when it comes to stormwater, that is just not necessarily. main driver, which when it comes to stormwater, that is just not necessarily true. Just because your home is valued at a higher rate does not necessarily mean your, your home causes more stormwater, more phosphorus to go into the streams. So by having a much more convoluted, that's not the right word, much more complicated formula, instead of your property value driving that, by having a utility, we can have that conversation instead.
Should you come up to the mic, George? Not everybody can hear you, so I just tried to, I can hear you, but.
But my questions were, is, so you envision this as, it's going to be like the size of your lot, how much hard surface versus su, ground, you know, ground, soft surface that you have permeable surface? And I'm, I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, so lot, still a lot of the details of how precisely we are going to figure that out is what we're working on. And Raj had shown in one of the slides that there's some money in this budget for hiring a consultant. We're also going to start that work in FY24, because we do have some funds that we can use to do that. And a lot of that detail will be worked out through, through that process.
We should, we should probably take the question, as we're running, running up on the, can you read that out?
I can read this out. So these questions, this question online is, is really pertains to the rental registry. Why are we doing $120 per unit per year? That is more expensive than Burlington's rental registry program. Burlington has over 10,000 rentals, while Essex Junction doesn't even have a third of that. As well as why are we charging per year if we are going off of other municipalities? I spoke to the fire chief in St. Albans, who made their program based on Winuski's. It is $100 per unit per inspection, and they inspect every eight, four years. We are only planning to inspect once every five years. Why not charge landlords per inspection to keep costs down for the tenants of that So some of these questions, so just for folks in this room that don't know, we did have a public hearing for the rental registry program on this past Wednesday night, on the 24th. We are planning to prepare questions and answers to all of those comments that we've got from folks, and can do that as well. But briefly, in two, in terms of $120 per unit per year, we developed the, essentially the budget of what this program would cost us, and have essentially divided that by the number of rental units that we believe that we have, and came up with that number. The, as, as another example, South Burlington is working on this program right now as well. And they have looked at, at certain components of their program and are adjusting their dollar amount as well, depending on if you're taking any exemptions from this, from the rental stock. Like, are we going to exempt affordable housing? And so from Burlington, South Burlington's perspective, I believe, they took those rentals out, and now they're looking at a per-unit fee per year of closer to $150. So certainly something that we will continue to look at further, but we're really basing the program based on the cost that is going to be for us here in Essex Junction, with, what we anticipate to be roughly 2,000 rental units. And the program is intended to inspect the properties, and then depending on whether there are any, I forget the exact term, it's not a violation, but if there are issues with a particular property, they will continue to get inspected, whereas if you have properties that don't have any issues going on, it tends to be in a longer timeframe cycle. So that's how it sort of ends up getting shift, shifts along the way. Yeah, so, and again, more to come on the specific answers to these.
Great. Thank you. So you talked about the time?
Yes. Are there any final questions? Because we did sort of commit to wrapping up around this time, realizing we got a little bit of a late start.
Sorry, just one more point, got Chelsea here. So we will be having public meetings about the stormwater utility too, for feedback. So there'll definitely be more as we get that ordinance up and running. Similarly to the rental registry, there's an ordinance, and we will get feedback on that when we get there as well.
So George, did anybody, does anybody that hasn't spoken have anything they wanted to say as we wrap up? Okay. And then we'll let, seeing none, I'm going to let George come up, and I'm going to just remind everybody as well, I guess, I think as Raj did earlier, email, write a letter, attend the 14th, February 14th meeting, et cetera, stay engaged. You know, you might think of something an hour after you go home, you know, oh, I should have said that, or, you know, whatever. The council wants to hear from you, so, so do so. So, go ahead, George.
Water lines and stuff like that, I see they're in the capital plan, that we don't, they're not part of the enterprise funds. We don't try to fund those out of the enterprise funds. Okay.
Yep, they are part of the enterprise fund. There's, they show up as waterline projects in the general fund capital, because there are other, like sidewalks, stormwater, or paving associated with those larger projects.
Okay, I know. I guess the other thing concerning the capital plan is, I noticed, we're not, we showed all the general fund and the money that we're transferring in, but typically, historically, you've always shown anticipated matching revenues, and we're not seeing that in the capital plan. I just didn't know, is that a change in process, or? I know you don't know what the numbers are all the time right off the bat, but there's usually some rough estimates of what you might be receiving.
Right, so at this point, we don't have any expected matching revenues. So usually, the matching revenues are like the Crescent Connector grant, some grant funding that we've already been awarded.
All right, so it's 12:30, so we're wrapping up. Do you want to, I'll hand it over to Raj to do the, the wrap-up.
I've got a few things too.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
So just, I, Raj touched on this before, but I do just want to reiterate that because this process is happening at a different time from when it used to happen, when they're, before ballots, what you see in front of you today, and what we've got online, is not the exact budget that will be voted on by voters on April 9th. The council will have another meeting on February 14th, and then on February 28th is when they will approve the budget, as well as all ballot items that you'll see on your ballot on April 9th, or coming in the mail before that. Then you might, I might be stealing your thunder, Raj, but I'm going to say these too, because you didn't. I just want to, again, thank CBE for this space and for hosting us. They've let us use this space for free. I really, really appreciate the partnership with CBE. And also, just wanted to let everybody know that both Elaine and Marcus are really, really apologetic that they couldn't be here today. They would have loved to have been here for this. They both had other things going on, as many of us have other things in life. So just wanted to say that.
No, that's it. Please do, before you leave, if you haven't already, spend some time in the other room. It won't take long. Get an update on what we've been doing, offer your input, take a look with what's been going on, so you're, so you're aware. But thank you all for coming, very much appreciate it.